Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Colonial Board of School Directors, Thursday, September 15th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session for 30 minutes on September 6th to discuss personnel issues. We also met prior to tonight's meeting regarding personnel, special education settlement and placement agreements, and student discipline. The meeting lasted approximately one hour. Dr. Christian, we have student recognition?
We do. Mrs. Moore, I'd like to welcome Coach Tornetta to the podium to recognize our Plymouth White Marsh High School cheerleaders.
Dr. Christian, you can call me Mrs. T., it's okay. I want to thank all of you for having us here tonight. The girls are extremely excited. They just finished practice, and they're very excited to be here. So, we would like to start off by thanking the Colonial School Board, Plymouth White Marsh Administration, the Plymouth White Marsh Athletic Office with Mr. Bretz, and Jen, we would be lost without her with buses and everything else, so thank you so much. I'd also like to introduce you to my coaching staff, my JV, or my assistant coach. My right-hand person here is Coach Nicole Campbell. Then I have my JV coach is Casey McCalpine, I never get it right. Then we have two volunteer coaches with us tonight. We have Melissa Mendez, and we have Taylor Woodward. So, if you want to go down. While they're busy shaking hands, I just want to let you know that your recognition is of us from camp, and we start in August 1st to get prepared for camp. We attended UCA's camp in Olfonte, Pennsylvania, at Pine Forest Camp this summer, where there were 800 other cheerleaders at that four-day camp. The varsity group was grouped with the top teams, and they placed second in the camp routine and received a Gold Superior Award. In our world, that's a pretty big award. That Gold Superior, thank you. That Gold Superior awards are only distributed to teams who have received two consecutive gold ribbons at evaluations at night, which we did. We also received two gold ribbons, okay. JV received Outstanding Ribbon and received the Most Improved Team at camp for that week. And they were small, but they were mighty at camp, so we are very proud of them. I'd like to introduce you to our JV cheerleaders. We're going to start off with our co-captain Tiffany Molinaro, Jay LaPlante, Shay Fitzpatrick, co-captain Samara Chu, Maddie Hornsby, oh, she's not here, Liv Chu. Have them come over in front here. Yep. Additionally, in receiving top-team awards in our divisions, we also had All-Americans were selected. They must try out in front of 800 cheerleaders, and we are so blessed this year to have four of our All-Americans. I'm going to name them before I introduce them all, but you can just raise your hand, girls. Our first All-American is Olivia Owens, Alexa Earl, Gwen McGinn, Ava Owens. We also have a prestigious award that they give to camp to a few very lucky young ladies. Actually, they earned it, so they're not lucky. Our captain, co-captain Margaret Thomasetti, and our co-captain Tiffany Molinaro both received a Pennant Forward Award, which takes in consideration up and above cheerleading, kindness, helpfulness, and just generally good ambassadors to our sport and our school. So, we are very proud of them. And then, to end it all off, we had two young ladies who have been selected by UCA to become a staff member for Universal Cheerleading Association, so we're very proud of them, Gwen McGinn and Olivia Owens. So, our goals now is to be great ambassadors for our school district, as well as cheering for our games, home and away, and then preparing for our own bids to Nationals and state, PIAA states. So, they're our next big things to accomplish. So, we could not be more fortunate to be a part of the village of these young ladies, and the representation that they bring to the school district is just above and beyond. So, with that, I'd like to introduce to you the following young ladies. Olivia Bell, Megan Bergen, Kayla Berkmyr, Caroline Chu, Melina Day, Alexa Earl, Samantha Earl, Molly Feinberg, Natalie Cryer, Neera Martin, Gwen McGinn, Ava Owens, Olivia Owens, Kaitlyn Paris, Brooke Paski, Delaney Perry, London Smith, Deja Southward, Aleah Tompkins, Margaret Thomasetti, Juliana Weller, and Riley Wheeler. Ladies, on three, say thank you. Tell everybody, on three, say thank you. I just want to let you know that I've coached four of their mothers. One, two, three, thank you. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. T., not only are they talented, this is clearly the most organized team we have ever recognized.
That's because they're still afraid of me. Come on. All right, girls, good job. Good job. No noise. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Mrs. T.
Thank you. I'd like to move on and ask for a motion for the approval of minutes of meetings 4B through 4F, shown on the agenda. Beth, thank you. Is there a second? Sharon, any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor? Great. I'd like to have a motion to approve the financial reports as represented in items 5B through 5L for August, and also, while we're at it, for the Treasurer's Report, which is for August 2022, if I could have a motion. Jamina, thank you. Will, second. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Zabrowski about any of the reports? All in favor? Now is the time for public comments, items on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment on the agenda? Mr. Bogley, any emailed comments or anything?
We did not receive any.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Christian, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. A motion to approve the Personnel Report and Extracurricular Contracts outlined in 8B and 8C. Board action is requested for the recommended Personnel Changes. Appointments for Promotion, Employment, or Transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
Is there a second to the motion? Gail, thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Christian on tonight's report? All in favor? And we'd like to welcome Emma Friedman and Olivia Pruski. Pruski, thank you. I'll get it right next time, I hope, as our student representatives to the board, and I assume you have a report for us tonight. Welcome. No report? Nothing? Okay.
How was the first week?
But you had a great first week of school?
Yeah, everything's going well so far, so.
Could you both just, I'm going to put you on the spot. I read your resumes, and I know you are involved in many different activities, and volunteer activities and otherwise. Could you just introduce yourself to the board and tell us a little bit about yourselves?
Sure. My name's Emma. My name's Emma. I'm part of many clubs like Student Coalition, Cancer Awareness, and Many Thon, and plenty more. I work at the market of Lafayette Hill, and, I mean, that's a little bit about me.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Olivia. I'm a part of the tennis team. I'm the captain of the tennis team. I'm the editor-in-chief of the Town Crier, the student newspaper. I'm heavily involved in PW PALS, the tutoring program, and I'm also the president of National Honor Society. That's all a bit about me.
Thank you, and welcome. We look forward to the school year with you.
Thank you. A little behind in the agenda, but in accordance with Board Policy 004, two students have been nominated for the positions of student representatives to the board. Interviews were conducted and related information reviewed. This is a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for these two young ladies that we just met. Is there a second? Sharon? Any questions for anybody? All in favor? Now officially, we welcome you to the board. Item B, Gail.
This is a motion to approve a revision to the K-12 calendar for 2022-23 to designate August 31st, 2022, September 1st, 2022, and November 8th, 2022, as Act 80 days.
Is there a second? Thanks, Beth. Any questions or comments? Dr. Christian, could you just explain what Act 80 days are?
Sure. The Act 80 rule from the Pennsylvania Department of Education allows districts to count certain days where we do professional development as instructional time. Some of the instances where counts include curriculum writing, parent-teacher conferences. We still meet the requirements for the number of instructional hours and instructional days, but in the event that we have, and I really hope we do not, a very tough winter with a lot of snow days, it does allow us to count them as instructional time. But we have, in my time here and well before that, have always met the requirements in addition to the Act 80 days. It's essentially an insurance policy for us.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Great. Gail, continue.
Yes, this is a motion for Board Direction is requested regarding the proposed start date of the 2023-2024 school year. The administration recommends that September 5th be approved as the first day of school. Motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Is there a second? Jamina? Any questions or comments on this? I just want to point out that it's been the board's policy for years to let the families in the community know as soon as possible when the start date will be, so people can plan vacations. And so, 23-24 school year sounds really far away, but we wanted to get this into everybody's hands as soon as possible. So, we'll work on the administrative work on the actual calendar now, but we wanted to announce the start date.
Correct. Just approving the start date.
Yep, that's all we're approving. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, when we had the meeting, we talked about the holidays and how that would all fall. We're not doing that now. This is just the start day.
Just the first day. We have a process. We meet with our staff to review the calendar.
Yeah, okay.
And there's, in addition to the holidays, there's many other things that go on the calendar.
Okay, let's do that one more time. All in favor? Thank you. Jamina?
This is a motion to approve two placement agreements in lieu of FAP. Due to restrictions regarding student confidentiality and privacy, these agreements were reviewed in executive session.
Is there a second? Beth? Any questions? All in favor?
And we have also a motion to approve a settlement and release agreement. Due to restrictions regarding student confidentiality and privacy, this agreement was also reviewed in executive session.
May I have a second? Gail? Everybody raised their hand that time. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Great.
Beth? This is a motion to approve the contract with Epic Health Services to provide health-related services as needed for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Is there a second? Will, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Will?
This is a motion to approve the transportation contracts for Superior Bus Service Plymouth Meeting and ALC School LLC, San Clemente, California, to provide supplemental bus services due to the nationwide shortage of bus drivers. Administration has recommended contracting with two additional companies to provide bus transportation, Superior Bus Service and ALC Schools, will be utilized to supplement the district's primary bus contractor for after-school/athletic transportation and other transportation needs as required. Both contracts do not commit any upfront costs. The district is billed only when services are used.
Is there a second? Sharon? Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
All right, and this is a, oh, we're good, right? All right. This is a motion to exonerate the tax bills for the parcels detailed below, recently purchased by Conshohocken Borough.
You do not have to read all the numbers.
Yeah, okay. As listed below.
Second to that motion, Beth? Any comments or questions? Mr. Zabrowski, you want to explain why we exonerate tax bills?
Yes, similar to what we did last month with the White Marsh Township, Conshohocken has purchased formerly taxable properties for open space and recreation for the citizens of Conshohocken. And whenever a fellow municipality or tax issuer collects, they usually ask their fellow county, township, school district if they would exonerate. Say, we'll be getting an exemption for next year. It was a little too late for this year. The tax bills were issued, and that's why we need to exonerate tonight.
And it will be, we don't have to approve it going forward? It's?
No, the county will make an exemption for next year.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Okay, Sharon?
Motion to close Fund 39, the PW Construction Fund, and authorize the transfer of the remaining fund balance to the Capital Reserve Fund, Fund 32. With the completion of the construction project at Plymouth White Marsh High School, Fund 39 is no longer needed. The fund balance of approximately $475,000 will be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund to be utilized for other capital improvements in the district.
Is there a second? Gail? Any questions on this? All in favor?
Motion to approve FW Howder Construction in the amount of $307,712 for the construction and installation of two softball dugouts and a new backstop. This work is identified in the five-year improvement plan and will be completed before the first varsity game, softball game, in March of '23.
Second? Beth? Any questions or comments? No? All in favor?
Motion to approve Penn Builders Construction Company in the amount of $1,741,692.18 for the installation of a synthetic track at the Colonial Middle School football multipurpose field. This work would begin in the spring of '23 and open for use with the start of the school year in September of '23.
Is there a second? Will? Any questions or comments on this? All in favor? Sorry. That's her. Thank you. We'll have to split you two up next time. Exchange students, Gail?
Yes, this is a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for two international exchange students to attend Plymouth White Marsh High School for the 22-23 school year.
Is there a second? Jamina? Any questions on this? Mrs. Burke, where's the exchange? Where are they coming from?
One student from Spain and one from Germany.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
This is a motion to approve the conference request as outlined below. PW High School World Language Teacher Richard Medel to attend the ACTFL 2022 Annual Conference and World Languages Expo in Boston, Massachusetts, from 11/18/22 to 11/20/22. Dr. Medel will also be presenting at the conference. And also, the PW High School College Counselor Beth Lynch to attend the University of Tampa's High School Counselor Fly-In Event. There is no cost to the district for this event.
May I have a second? Beth? Any questions or comments on these requests? All in favor?
Last, this is a motion to approve an overnight trip for the PW High School Girls Basketball Team. The team will be participating in the West York High School Tip-Off Classic in York, PA, on December 2nd through 3rd, 2022.
Second? Beth? Any questions? All in favor? Beth?
This is a motion to approve instructors and classes for the Plymouth White Marsh High School Adult Evening School Fall 2022 Session as outlined in the attached memo from Jessica Lester dated September 12th, 2022.
Jamina? Any questions? All in favor? Okay, Solicitors' Report.
I have no report.
Okay. Committee Reports, Community Relations. Jamina?
Yes, so the Community Relations Committee met this past Monday. We talked about a draft calendar, and we discussed whether or not the start date should be before or after Labor Day, and settled on after Labor Day, as we just voted on. We also discussed the girls' basketball overnight team. And we also, lastly, we discussed the breakfast program. Our Food Services Director had started to put together a plan in place to support breakfast for students in our district who did not meet the federal cutoff but were in need of services. And then, we found out that the governor has approved free breakfast across the state beginning October 1st for all students in all districts. So, we were ahead of the game. Our very amazing Food Services Director was ahead of the game. So, the funds that we were going to use to support the breakfast program were now going to be diverted and to support families who are in need of support for the lunch program. Talked about having some forms and some processes that are coming out soon.
We'll be sending out a communication to our families either by the end of this week or early next week on the process, so certainly, and we also appreciate the Ed Foundation contributing to help support this worthy initiative.
And, Dr. Christian or Mrs. Burke, how many, I believe Lori told us, how many additional students we should be able to help with this program? Was it?
Over 300.
Great. So, we thank Lori McCoy for seeing things well in advance of our need for them.
Absolutely. Very excited and happy to know that our children will have access to food to get their day started. We also had Curriculum Committee met on Monday as well, and at that meeting, Ms. Gregitis gave an overview of the Colonial School District Future Ready Comprehensive Plan and the process that we took to create the plan. The Future Ready Comprehensive Plan can be found on the district website under Curriculum Reports, along with three additional supportive plans. That's our Gifted Plan, Induction, and Professional Development. Our Curriculum Supervisor gave an overview of the Professional Development Plan and Induction Plan, along with highlights on the district-wide PD held in August for professional staff to participate in and expand their knowledge. Ms. Burke outlined the Gifted Education Assurances Plan and its three components as part of the Future Ready Comprehensive Plan. And Curriculum Supervisors provided highlights of the summer learning opportunities that were offered this summer to students at no cost. We also discussed the conference request that will move tonight at our board meeting.
Thank you. Facilities, Mrs. Epstein is not here. Mr. Lally, is there anything you'd like to report on from our committee meeting?
No report.
Thanks. Finance? Will?
Yes. So, we met on September 6th, and Mrs. Zabrowski and his team are doing really good things. They compared the budget from 2019 to 2021, 2022, and it's very favorable within 1% of the budget for expenditures. Revenues are actually going to be positive due to real estate taxes, transfer taxes, delinquent taxes that are being recouped by the district. So, we should have a surplus, so doing really good things.
Great, thank you. HR, Beth?
No report.
You want to report on anything from the tech school meeting the other night since Chris isn't here? Hate to put you on the spot.
I don't have a report. I didn't, I wasn't prepared. I didn't.
That's fine. That's fine. I didn't, you know. All right, thanks. Intermediate Unit, Sharon?
No report at this time.
Great, thank you. Anyone have anything for Legislative? Any municipal or community reports?
As always, Conshohocken wants to remind everyone that we have the Fun Fest this Saturday on Fayette Street, vendors, activities for the kids, community groups, sponsors, restaurants. Definitely come out and enjoy the day from 12 to 8 on Fayette Street.
Thank you. Anyone else have a report? And Gail, do you have anything for the foundation?
Thank you, sorry. Our first meeting will be on the 27th for the school year. As Sue mentioned earlier, in terms of the partnership with helping to provide funding for the free lunch, that's going to be actually the theme for the annual campaign this year. And we're also working with local companies for additional partnerships and sponsorship.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any other? Did I miss anybody? Okay. Now's the time for public comments on any item not on the agenda. Just come up, if you would, to the, yep, and just give us your name and what municipality you come from.
Yeah, so my name is Monique Parker, Conshohocken. I have a daughter, Monae Harris, who is at Colonial Middle School, 6th grade. This is a picture of my daughter. I did not want to bring her here due to the sensitivity of what I am about to address. And please forgive me being emotional. My daughter, for the second time this year, has been called the N-word 21 times. This has been presented. This is not okay. It is not okay. We need to act now. Today, I got an email from Ms. Vivy that, again, in science class, from another student, it was said, it's not okay. What is this district doing? There is a vacant position for the Director of Diversity, and there needs to be immediate focus on filling that vacant position. In the wake of George Floyd, there was so much sensitivity around diversity and inclusion. And to me, it was a front. If we cannot provide our students to learn without being self-ostersized, then how are they going to learn? My daughter did not want me to take it as far as I'm doing because she is the only black person in her clique of friends. And by me taking it as far as I am doing, she feels as though she will have no friend. So, it's not okay. So it's not okay. I'm upset, aggravated, and outraged. I have reached out to everyone. However, there has been nothing done to the girl who has sent these in text message to my child. There has been nothing done to the cousin who also unleashed a barrage of saying the N-word to my child 21 times, and she's in the elementary school. There has also been no feedback from the superintendent or anyone else, including the main principal. The only person willing to help me and communicate with me is another African-American at the school who is the 6th grade assistant principal. And it's not right. I went to our Schrader High School. I went to Our Lady of Thorns. And we moved out of Philadelphia three years ago so that she would not have to go through what I went through. But every day, she gets called the N-word. The teachers cannot identify any of the behaviors that our students of color are exhibiting, whether it be crying, whether it be them turning themselves off emotionally to learning, or any other matters. I just found out that my next-door neighbor, whose son is a 2nd grader and he is Caucasian, actively sits in class with another African-American 2nd grader who is bullied daily by a Caucasian 2nd grader. Her snack is taken, her chair is pushed from her sitting down, and she is also ostracized. So what is the board prepared to do? Not tomorrow, but now. Because it's not right. There needs to be a SWAT team of counselors that have diversity training under their belts. In the wake of COVID, we have learned to learn how to virtually coexist. You can Google right now elearnings on diversity and inclusion, and every single adult is made to take those at a workplace. Our children should be able to take those as well as a mandatory class quarterly. There are also peer coachings for staff. I taught at Mainline Health Diversity and Inclusion for three years. There's a curriculum on anything you want taught. The issue is, is the district willing to take on discrimination as they are bullying? Because if you ask me, it's the same thing. It's a zero tolerance policy. So we're not going to say bullying gets X and discrimination gets Y. It should be the same sense of urgency. There also should be training for both staff and administration to recognize when our students are not performing well. If you can't recognize a student's performance, how do you further investigate if there's something at home wrong? If there's something in the class wrong? If there's a child who may be being beat by someone? These are the things that you need to take stock in, and more training needs to be and focus needs to be put on our staff recognizing these things. There is no way that a staff member cannot tell me, if another child can tell me, that this little girl is crying every day. We also have the fact that we have a lot of changeover in our district, and we have a lot of folks who do not want to take on discrimination. But you can't pick and choose what you want to address and what you don't want to address. So if we're going to hire our staff members and our administration to look after our kids, we have to hire them to take on the total package of looking after our kids, and it's not just what they want to pick and choose to address. We shouldn't have the Black teachers addressing the discrimination. Everyone should be able to identify and address that. I am open to feedback from the board because this is something some of you may not have known to have been going on. But for the last week, I find it very disheartening that the only other person who's willing to help me is an African-American person in the school.
First off, I apologize for what your daughter experienced. All of our students need to feel safe and cared for in school. If you don't feel safe and cared for, you can't learn. And that is one of the pillars that we follow when we do our goal-setting every year. As soon as I heard from a board member about your situation, I asked Mrs. Spivey and Mr. Kaplan to set up a meeting with you so we could get more information, and I believe they're trying to do that. I certainly don't want to get into details of that. I am absolutely available to meet with you and go over any and all of your concerns. We are committed to our Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Initiative. We've been so for two and a half years. We are in the process and very close to naming a successor for our new equity and our replacement for our Equity and Advancement Officer. We did, we'll go over all the professional development training that we did with our teachers at the beginning of this school year before the kids started. And we, there is always room for growth and room to improve, but it starts with children feeling safe, all children. And we want our students of color to be able to be comfortable to go to any adult and express their concerns and know that they will be cared for. And we will follow through with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on any subject this Good evening. If you could just give us your name and where you live.
Sure. Cynthia James, Plymouth native, and my daughter goes to Colonial Middle School. And I wanted to share my concern around bullying and having it really distinct what type of discipline takes place, having maybe even a flow chart. This happens, then this happened. As I've been reporting, constant bullying to my daughter, it's a talking to. But this particular child actually showed up at a park to try to beat up three students from Colonial Middle School, and we're still talking to him. And I don't think it's safe to continue to talk. We have to have some actual consequence. And I emailed to you, emailed me right back, and redirected me to Principal Kaplan. And we're actually scheduled to have a meeting with the two police departments, White Marsh as well as Plymouth, the child's parent, myself, and the principal and vice principal. But we're at the second week of school, and he's already had two more incidences at the actual school. Before, I felt like it was not heard and being blown off because it was off-campus. But now we're physically at the school and it's still happening, and we're still talking to him. So his profile, and I know the principal said, "We starting over" because it's a new year. But he got suspended multiple times last year, actually caused the kids to have a concussion. There is a page on Instagram for this one boy who has fought at least eight times and hurt people. So he has that profile leading up to the kid that returns to school with a knife or a gun. And what I told Mr. Kaplan, "I'm not interested in next month being on the lawn with a memorial service because this kid comes back and hurt many people." He literally put on TikTok, which I sent to the police department, Mr. Kaplan, that it was 10 students in this TikTok and a staff member who she did report to police, made a police report to the Plymouth White Marsh because the rap song that was behind it was talking about hurting all of these children. So it's exclusively for my daughter, but it's also for everyone because this is the profile of the child that comes to school and ended up hurting more than just one person. And I was appalled that it wasn't taken serious because not only was those children one year, it was a staff member, picture, who was in the yearbook. And I kept being told, "Well, it didn't happen at school." Yeah, but he's using school material, right? So when do we separate the two and then we put it together for the safety of them all? So I'm highly concerned that we're going to do another talking to, which this kid normally brags about. He brags about, "Oh, they had to, you know, I had to go to the police." So it's not like a real consequence for him. And then after the talking to, then what? Because meanwhile, my daughter is walking around concerned that she sees him in the 7th grade lunchroom that he's going to do something because it's happened twice already. And we've met, and there's a talking to, but there's no real result. So my concern is that we actually haven't spelled out. I printed out the whole, you know, chart about bullying, and it's not just spelled out. I keep hearing case by case. Well, we got a case. So with the case we have, what is the consequence? We don't need no more case studies. We have actual happening. So what is the actual consequence besides a talking to? So I would like to propose that we actually have some actual consequences to behavior and not just meetings and talking to. Meanwhile, she's trying to have her education and actually loves school, but actually wanted to go out for the football team. The coach asked her if she wanted to go out for the football team because of how well she does in gym, and she said, "Definitely not. I'm not going because he's going to be on there, and I don't want to be confronted by him." So now, my child doesn't get to express herself in sports because he's going to be there, and she doesn't want to risk the conflict, and she doesn't trust the adults in her life in that situation to keep her safe. So you can imagine how that makes me feel as a parent because I can't be there, you know, for her, but the people I'm entrusting her to, she doesn't trust that they're going to keep her safe. So what do we do with that? How can we actually put consequences in place? We have violations in many different circumstances, many different departments, that we are clear that this happens. But when it comes to bullying, it's just so vague that it doesn't give children, they won't even self-regulate when they think it's going to just be a talking to, right? What motive do we have unless we really put a serious consequence? So what can we do about that?
So obviously, for confidentiality reasons, I can't talk about a specific student.
Yeah, I have a high.
I will tell you, I will say, though, the summer situation, we did contact the authorities on that. So we didn't, we did something. And then we have a progressive discipline policy that involves detention, suspension, and can lead, in certain situations, extreme situations, expulsion. So I'm aware of the meeting that you have with Mr. Kaplan. I'll certainly make Mrs. Burke available or myself available to attend if that's needed. So there is a process that we follow. I can't talk about this specific child that you're referencing.
Sure. And I'm not interested necessarily in you talking about it in a specific, that's why I was so vague too, right? Because it's still a child.
Understood. No, I appreciate that.
But here's my hesitation about that. I reported it on August 3rd, August 23rd, 20, he was not seen or his parent met with, and that's what Mr. Kaplan said they were going to meet with him. They had not. August 27th is when he showed up to the park to try to beat up the three kids. August 28th is when the meeting was about, August 23rd. So perhaps if he was met with, with his parents prior to that, we may have not gotten to August 27th when he then tried to beat up the kids. So I'm just, that's what I'm saying. If we have, like, seriously thinking through what's the consequences, right? Because I don't know that that meeting would have happened, except we had a second violation. You follow what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Which is pretty scary, specifically the type of video he put out. This is, the type of video he put out is the type of videos we see in Texas and all kind of places when the student comes back with a gun and he does this, that, and the other, and then everybody goes, "We should have done more." And that's what I'm afraid of. And I don't want to be their parent standing there crying my eyes out, saying, "I should have done more." We all sitting there, being on the news nationally, saying, "We should have done more." When I'm speaking, I put the incidents reports in, I reached out to you, I reached out to Mr. Kaplan, I just met with them again because he called their name and cornered her also after lunch. And now what? Right? Now what? Because we don't want to look back on this day and you'll go, "I remember her," and you're looking at me on the news, right? Or we're all grieving because 12 kids get killed and the staff, right? So it's not just talking, this is serious, and we don't want to just leave it to chance. We don't want to roll this dice.
Not at all.
Because the meeting hasn't been planned. It's been being planned for over a week now. So we still don't even have a concrete date to say this is when we need to meet.
You will have a concrete date by tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Mr. Bogley, are there any emails?
It's not.
Is there anything else from the staff or the board? All right, Cynthia.
I know Dr. Christian's going to follow with both of our parents that spoke this evening. I just want to, I guess, express my concern by what our parents have shared, my disgust at what's being sent to our students of color, to our Black students, what they're experiencing, and just know that the board stands behind making these things, you know, making sure that these things are addressed. I know we all do. And I know that we'll be looking to see what conversations and next steps we take as an organization at the school district to make sure that all of our students, that our students of color, that our Black students feel safe when they go to school. We don't often have a lot of parents with public comment, particularly like we've heard this evening. It is upsetting. It is upsetting to me as a Black woman, as a mother of Black children, that there are children. And I would imagine that for every parent we have that came out tonight, that there are five, 10, 15, perhaps 20 more that have not come out. And that's really what concerns me, and that's really what frightens me, is that for those who have come, I'm so sorry. For those who have come out, for the children whose parents have come out, the children whose parents have not, the children whose parents have, the children who just go to school and suck it up, and they hear the words, and they just have to suck it up and deal with it, it is not okay. I echo Ms. Parker's comment and Ms. Cynthia's comment. It is not okay, and something has to be done.
And I'd like to just follow that up by thanking both of you for coming here tonight. I know it's not easy, and I know that your kids might be angry with you, but it was the right thing to do, and we really appreciate you coming and making us all aware of this. So we're sorry for the pain you're feeling. And as Dr. Clay said, certainly, the entire board is behind you, and I know our administration will follow up with both of you, but thank you for coming out tonight.
I'd just like to add that I know that it's hard to make these meetings, and it's very necessary to share your stories. And sometimes I hear things, and I encourage people to come to these meetings, and I will also, again, encourage people to come and let your story be told because when we just say we heard something in our community, it doesn't carry the same weight as when you come here and tell us specifically. Words on a paper sometimes don't make the story real. You know, I know that everyone wants to think that they are sensitive to some of these issues, but there's a different type of sensitivity that we feel when you're, when people make you feel like you're paranoid, or you're making it up, or it's not that bad, or we've come a long way, and you can see how far we still have to go. I thank you for coming, and we will work together and get something done.
Does anyone else want to say something?
I mean, between Will, Sue, and Jamina, you've kind of said it all. I mean, to Jamina's point, great, we sit here as the, you know, first three Black, African-American people on this board. And so I know each of us had our own story of, you know, why, and when we had our passions of why we ran to become part of this board. And we stand, you know, with you, and we're all, you know, very emotional right now because some of us, I know I did, I experienced that. And so I know from experience what your daughter may be going through, Ms. Parker. So I'm saddened to hear that she is going through that. And I thank you, and I thank both of you for your bravery to come here. And to Will's point, I think we need more parents. So we, obviously, as board members, can speak and say, "Hey, come to the meetings because we don't know all of the stories." And so encourage your community, encourage the community that you're, the communities that you're in, and your friends and neighbors to also come and present these stories. And whether they don't want to come in person... And whether they don't want to come in person, send emails. Where we, where our emails are all on the website, please send them. We do read them, we do discuss them. And again, because of confidentiality, we may not be able to discuss details in public, but we do discuss, and we have, I will say, healthy discussions as a board when we get emails from parents. So again, thank you.
I'll just add, you know, I want to echo what everyone said. I also want to particularly echo what Will said in terms of, it's not okay to say we've come so far because we still have so much further to go. And I think that speaks for all of us, administrators, board members, and community. And, you know, partnering with you in terms of solutions, in terms of next steps is so important. And so, yes, thank you for sharing your story. Thank you for, as Gail said, your bravery, and, you know, continue to support us so we can support you in moving all of us forward for the safety of all of our children.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no other comments, the meeting is adjourned.